Can we come to order? Good afternoon and welcome to the fifteenth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your cell phones and electronic devices. If you're appearing before the commission today, please introduce yourself, your client, and spell your names for our mission reporter. And if you're here to testify on any matter on the agenda, please come forward, be sworn in by Ms. O'Raugh, introduce yourself, and also spell your name for our court reporter. Thank you. Moving into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one. This is transfer application number 19-16010 for King Restaurant and Bar LLC.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is me representing King Restaurant Bar LLC. DBA King Restaurant and Bar. Sitting to my right is Mr. Kevin Lee, member LI. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Raugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has got statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or any type of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number 19-16010.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number 19-16010 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number two, transfer application number 19-16186 from Ming Dynasty Fish and Shrimp Company. Mr. Hu.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. To my right is Min Yon Lin. He's the general manager for the premises. For the record, if I'm going to listen counsel, there are no changes to investigative report.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Raugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, one letter of support. Applicant has got statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the June thirteenth, preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Is this currently on a temporary license?
It is on temporary license.
Any problems, concerns?
No problems.
Thank you.
She says she needs more business.
Mr. Hu, it would be nice to hear from your client.
She had bitch.
Unless you can represent that you are there all the time. Thank you.
Motion to approve transfer application number 19-16186.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, transfer application number 19-16186 is approved. Calling agenda item number three, application number 19-16364 from IES Retail LLC. Mr. Hu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner members. Kenneth Hu appearing for the applicant. To my right and sitting down now is Mr. Tim Parker, K E R, K E R, Vice President.
Thank you. Ms. O'Raugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received five written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has got statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the June thirteenth, preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Please come forward, sir.
I'm going to swear you in. I'm going to run a three-minute timer. Do you swear the testimony here for today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair Oda, J A R R O D, last name O D A.
Please have a seat, Ms. O. Thank you.
I'm the facilities director for New Hope Lee Word, next door to which the mini mart is being built and the liquor license is being applied for. And I'd like to submit to you just a photo of the proximity of the mini mart, if that is possible.
Yes, please. Ms. Fontaine.
So it is well within 500 feet of an elementary school, which we do operate out of that building. And so I understand there is a law that may allow the disapproval of a license being within 500 feet of an elementary school. And for the safety of the children and the operations of New Hope Lee Word, I would ask or I am protesting the application.
Okay. May I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Is that the construction of the new Eva Elementary School?
No, sir. That is the construction of the mini mart. And so I hand wrote on there our building as well as the mini mart.
And what is the school that it's next to?
New Hope Christian School.
New Hope?
Christian School.
Christian School?
Elementary School.
Elementary, okay. That is associated with New Hope Church?
Yes, sir.
And on the same property?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Commissioners, do you have any question?
Mr. Oda, is that the school also called New Hope Lee Word Couple A Campus?
Correct.
So we have an investigative report that indicates that the proposed retail premises are 176 feet away, but your photo looks like it's within 30 feet away.
It looks pretty close, yes, so.
What's your estimate of the distance?
So I'm not sure where the investigative measurements took place, so that's why I brought in a photo.
What is your best estimate of the closest proximity between the two?
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Okay. Mr. Hu, could you respond to concerns of the community, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've read the protests, three of which I just got, and I mean, many of which appear to be emailed, and so obviously they're not signed. They do not appear to be from residents or registered voters within the 500 feet. When we passed the preliminary hearing, we wanted to reach out to the community, and so we did. We talked to the neighbors because the churches is our neighbor. We acknowledge that, and to tell them that what we're going to do. This is a retail license, doesn't allow on sale and consumption on the premises. So the statutory reference that was made doesn't, is not applicable to this. I mean, we've got many retail stores that are within 500 feet of churches, schools, all over the island. But more importantly, we wanted to be a good neighbor and to let them know what we're going to do, that we're not going to be a burden to them, that already this area is all business-owned. It's all business-owned. Within the complex that this, the New Hope is in, there are four or five other businesses, some eating establishment, that opened late too. I understand that they operate a school, which may be a private elementary. They may have morning preschool and maybe afternoon preschool, but by 5:30, they're gone, right? Our retail license doesn't allow us to sell past midnight, right? So we're not really sure of the concern. I understand their concern, and looking at the protest letters from the agencies that did send them in, I mean, these are agencies that are just totally against the sale of liquor and the consumption of liquor. There's nothing we can do to change their minds about it, but that's what it is. We exercise, so IES already exercises six retail liquor licenses on this island. We've been doing this. We know how to do it. And we will act responsibly to make sure that we are not a burden or a bother to the neighborhood. With regard to the proximity of the store to this property or to the church property, there is a common property line, which is bordered by a wall, which is really the back of their building, and then we have a fence. So there's no access. There's no access, okay? So we think that we can provide a convenience to the community, which is what we want to do, and obviously we want to make money, right? But that's what we're there for, and we're not going to inconvenience the neighborhood.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Ah, yes, Mr. Hu, do you know, by any chance, how long this site has been vacant?
I don't know. We leased the property approximately two years ago, and it's been vacant. I've been living in Hawaii for three years. It was vacant for the year before that, as far as I know. Sandra?
Probably about three years.
At least three years.
At least three years.
At least three years. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. We are now in executive session. We're now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action for the applicant?
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve application number 19-16364.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number 19-16364 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hu, would you please remind your client of the location that he's in, and be very mindful in discharging his business?
We'll remain in contact with Mr. Oda and make sure that, you know, we can address his concerns as they come up.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number four of the public hearing, application number 19-16489 from Hodori Market Corporation. Ms. Wu.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Min Yon Lin, on behalf of Hodori Market Corporation. On my right is manager Xiang Lan Cui. Name spelled X I A M G L A N C U I.
Thank you. Ms. O'Raugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicant has got statutory requirements for the submission of this application, and for the record, a summary of the June thirteenth, preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Motion to approve application number 19-16489.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number 19-16489 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda, agenda item number five, application number 20-20028 from Volume Services Inc., DBA sent approved.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ms. O'Raugh. Robert Ichikawa, representing Volume Services Inc., sitting at center plate. To my right is Mr. David Mariama, the general manager. To my far right is Mr. Roger Reeves, district manager.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Mr. Ichikawa, thank you for submitting the security plan, which is exempted to the investigative report. Question out is, how did your client determine the number of security and HPD to be retaining or hiring for this event?
Okay. We'll get to that. I just want to also make one change to on the requested hours of operation.
Yes, thank you. Please address that.
So, yes, so the hours would be from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Very good.
And that's for purposes of, you know, servicing, bringing on the inventory and clearing. But the actual service hours would be 12:30 when the gates open, and they'll close at the beginning of the third quarter. Or, I'm sorry, at the end of the third quarter.
End of the third quarter, you will cease liquor sales?
We estimate between 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., yeah. And 30% of the beer stations will be closing earlier at about maybe 10 minutes into the third quarter.
Very good.
As far as determining the number of security, I think for the UH football games in the past, they had about 26 security. They felt that because of the size of the event, as well as just being more vigilant as far as what their responsibilities are, they tried to, if not double it, increase it by more, and maybe David can adjust the numbers.
Sure. Basically, to sum it up, from the report that you have, we're increasing our liquor compliance officers by about 36 people, so it's a lot more. We're also increasing our ID checkers by about 24, on top of what you guys have there.
So the total would come out to 92 personnel for security and 68 personnel for ID checking, correct?
Yes.
So up from 26 personnel for security for a UH football game.
I don't have in my mind what was the average attendance for the UH football games? Was it about half of this?
About half.
Okay. Also, on page three of the investigative report indicates that the landlord is going to authorize the commission inspectors to enter the premises. Can you comment on that to make sure that there is unfettered access for investigators?
Yeah, I think center plate will do all they can to allow for that. We understand that personnel falls within our supervision even though it's outside of kind of the employment scope if it's hired by a stadium authority.
Okay.
We will do all our efforts to allow for that.
Has there been clear communication with the landlord to make sure that the investigators can enter the premises without any impediments?
Yes, I've spoken directly with the stadium manager.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
Mr. Ichikawa, have all your employees that are going to be serving alcohol been registered with the commission?
They have been undergoing training, and the center plate has reached out to the Honolulu Liquor Commission to have a training session, which I believe is tomorrow, that whoever's going to be involved in the serving would be trained.
That was going to be my next question, but my question was, have they been registered as employees with the commission?
That is not required for a special.
Not for a special.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. And that training, are you folks doing additional training or just requiring the liquor?
There has been one set of training with which David can discuss, and then there's this next training, which is tomorrow. And then there will be a briefing, the date of the event. There will also be a summary, again, of recapping what the requirements are, what the responsibilities are, and to have each one sign that.
We are concerned because the client has had a history of allowing consumption by minors, and this is an all ages event. So have you folks done additional training to recognize and to intervene about passing drinks to minors?
I'll let David explain that in more detail, but yes, the training has been elevated to the number, sheer numbers of people that will be on site, as well as the training that they will be able to identify and recognize certain activity. And then, again, learning from the past is what David moves them forward, so that, again, based on their effort that they're putting in on the sheer number of people, and again, the amount of training and reaching out to the commission for assistance and training is all in that effort to curb that, so.
Are you folks going to be doing any bag checks?
The stadium side does the bag checks, yes, for the refills.
So they are going to be doing bag checks to prevent, because even if they bring in their own alcohol, that is a potential violation for you guys.
Right, right. So the bag checks will be there, but in addition to that, if the security does see, again, if they're not banded and holding some alcoholic beverage or there's something that looks like it, that's what they'll be identifying.
I recall NFL events require patrons to wear clear plastic bags. Are you guys aware of their restrictions?
Yes.
Okay, and so along the lines of clear plastic bags and a lot of items you cannot bring, right?
Yes.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you elaborate on a little bit on the service of the alcohol? We see that it's going to be your employees now serving. Is it going to be the same as you're going to have, say, volunteer workers working the concessions on, for part of those booths, and alcohol, and your employees doing just the alcohol? Or is it, are there separate stations just for alcohol purchase?
There are separate stations just for alcohol. There's a few of the concessions, which is combined with food and beer in mind, but David can kind of explain.
So what we have is the entrances to the places that just serve beer will be our persons to get into that area. It'll be cleared by us. We'll also have one person per concession stand to make sure anybody coming to the stand purchasing beer and food, we'll be checking those guys.
Okay, so the concession stands will still be manned by a nonprofit?
Yes.
Thus, the ID checkers at those stations and the person who actually serves the beverage, are those center plate employees or are those?
They are nonprofits.
They're going to be nonprofits?
Yes.
But they'll undergo training and attend the training session tomorrow?
Yes. Okay, so there's a designated representative from the nonprofit or non-profits that will be coming for the training?
Yes. Yes.
So they are not employees of center plate, or?
No.
Okay, I guess. There's a section on your investigative report that says only applicant employees will be serving.
Yeah, I guess under the rules, employees would be considered those who are under our supervision and responsibility.
Do you folks have a procedure for what will happen if during the course of the event, one of your employees or staff is found to be serving to minors or not checking IDs properly or not checking at all and still giving out bans?
Immediate termination.
Thank you.
And just to go back on the liquor, wherever there's going to be, there's only three areas that's going to have mixed drinks and liquor, and that area will be only employees of center plate. There's only one entrance in and out, and those who come into that area must consume all the purchases there, and no one's to leave with any business.
And I think I asked you folks this for another application, but have you folks communicated with the stadium about overnight parking? If somebody is too intoxicated to drive home, they can leave their car there overnight without penalty?
Yes, that's standard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for complying with the commission's requests. Appreciate the cooperation. That being said, Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve application number 20-20028 with the following conditions. Licensee will provide a post-event report no later than 30 days after the event to include gross liquor sales, number of attendees, and any incidents, any liquor-related incidents.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, application number 20-20028 is approved with the conditions stated in committee vice chair Min's motion. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck. Are we sold out?
Yes.
We are.
Good job.
Okay. Calling agenda item number six. This is applications number 20-20145-1 through 20-20145-20 inclusive from HSI DBA Liahi Market Bar. Mr. Hu.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Ms. O'Raugh, Robert Luoka, on behalf of HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company. Presenting to my right, Mr. Rick Jauer. He is the food and beverage operations director, first name R I C K, last name J A U E R T. At this time, we have nothing to add to the investigator's report. This is an extension of an existing special general license. We do have a pending restaurant application for the commission.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
And this is at the airport, correct?
It's at the airport, correct.
Any questions? Motion to approve applications number 20-20145-1 through 20-20145-20 inclusive.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, application number 20-20145-1 through 20-20145-20 inclusive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hu. Moving on to agenda item number seven. This is application 20-20149-1 through 20-20149-20 inclusive from Honolulu Joint Company, DBA Beer Kiosk, T 7, T 2, gate 7.
Robert Luoka, on behalf of HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company. Presenting to my right, Mr. Rick Jauer. He is the director of food and beverage. At this time, we have nothing to add. This is at another location within the Honolulu International Airport from August 30th to October 28th.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve applications number 20-20149-1 through 20-20149-20 inclusive.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, application number 20-20149-1 through 20-20149-20 inclusive is approved.
Thank you so much.
Our approval is approved. Calling agenda item number eight. This is application number 19-16341 from Guava Smoked LLC. Guava smoke, guava. Good, huh?
Yeah, we try.
You make your own sauce?
Yep.
Ooh. Local guavas?
Local, invasive YB.
Strawberry guava.
Strawberry guava, correct.
So this is going to be a barbecue place?
Yes, it is.
This is the old Hee Hing Restaurant upstairs, the new one?
Not the Hee Hing, actually. It's a, I guess, some kabob's with a edifuni, the garlic ahhi place, plus.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Very nice. Excuse me. Commissioners?
If you're in favor, state your name for the restaurant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry about that.
We're not excited, sorry.
Scott Shabuya, S E O T T, S H I B U Y A.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
And I do have a question, Mr. Shabuya. I noticed that you do not have any liquor industry experience.
No.
Are you going to be hiring someone with liquor experience?
Yes, we're looking for a bartender right now.
Okay. You understand that if this application is approved, you are responsible to comply with all laws, rules, regulations related to it?
Yes, absolutely.
Very good.
Motion to approve application number 19-16341.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, application number 19-16341 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nine, application number 19-16650 from M I B B LLC, DBA Miwana Island Bistro and Bar. Mr. Lee.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Terry Lee, manager for the applicant, uh, review investigator report, no changes.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Mr. Lee, is this, um, under a temporary?
It is.
When was that issued roughly?
Oh, gosh, I'm thinking, we've been open now about a month and a half, uh, almost two months now, so probably two and a half months ago.
I've not been there. I heard it's been quite busy.
Very busy.
Any issues with alcohol?
Not with alcohol, uh, given the location. Sometimes you get a few rowdy people, but, you know, fortunately, we've been able to handle the security. We've had one incident where a fight, uh, almost erupted, uh, but it was quickly, uh, handled.
As far as you know, that's not alcohol-related?
As far as I know, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I understand it's known for its local music also.
Yes, that's a big draw.
That's the big draw. Green?
Caleb, Caleb.
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six six five zero.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six six five zero is approved.
Thank you.
Rest of luck, Mr. Lee. Calling agenda item number ten, application number two zero dash two zero zero two zero from Duck Win Inc.
Chair, Commissioner Nishoka. Here on behalf of the applicant. To my right is E N I A N Win N G U Y E N, Vice President of the company. We have received in, um, the investigative report, have no additions and changes at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two zero dash two zero zero two zero.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one six six, excuse me.
Two zero.
Got it. Caught myself. Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, application number two zero dash two zero zero two zero is approved.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one six eight zero four from Island Oshite LLC. Mr. Lee.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Terry Lee, counsel for the applicant. To my right is Kevin Hany, the principal and manager of the app.
Thank you.
Review investigator report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six eight zero four.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one six eight zero four is approved.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Calling agenda item number twelve, application number one nine dash one six eight six one from K D M Enterprises. K D M Enterprises. No response. We'll move this to to the end.
Hold on. I think Mr. Nishoka, this is his matter.
Commissioner Nishoka here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we'd like to continue this matter for a period of two months. We're basically working to do a transfer of the license and would probably be withdrawing this, um, application.
You request this for a continuance?
Yes.
Too much?
Two months, yes.
Motion to continue, agenda item twelve, application number one nine dash one six eight six one for two months.
Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, application number one nine dash one six eight six one is continued for two months. Calling agenda item number nineteen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair.
Are you here for nineteen?
Also, yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna call that out of order because these are two, um...
I I didn't wanna ask to be called out of order in fairness to those, but if you will, that's, I appreciate that.
That's very, uh, common. Very common, Mr. Nishoka. Convenient for us also. Uh, request number one nine dash one, one nine dash one six nine five four from Mr. Ross Sodaro.
Okay, Chair. Commissioner Nishoka here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, again, we request a two-month continuance of this matter.
Motion to continue, agenda item nineteen, request number one nine dash one six nine five four for two months.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nineteen, request number one nine dash one six nine five four is continued for two months.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nishoka.
Moving on, next move.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thank you, Terry. Calling agenda item number thirteen, application number one nine dash one six two five seven from K W W K Inc., DBA Ohana Kariuki Grill and Bar. Mr. Who?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Minya Mu on behalf of K W W K Inc. On my right is President Kips Inagaki. There are no corrections necessary in the investigative report.
Thank you very much. Um, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one six two five seven.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirteen, application number one nine dash one six two five seven is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one six nine eight nine from Bloomingdale's Inc. Mr. Who?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission members, panelists who are appearing for the licensee. To my right, Scott Vasco, V A S K O, Vice President of the licensee. Uh, I could pass out, and I apologize for not doing this survey, but it's like a concept plan.
Can you give it to, to, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, as the conceptual plan, uh, talks about, the retail industry is has changed a lot and is much in distress, and we are asking for a permanent extension of the premises to enhance the customer experience and to have special events and to ma- basically make the, uh, the store operations run better. Now, uh, there are some questions that were raised in the investigative report which we can address, one being the the size. Uh, for number one, there is no prohibition under the Hawaii administrative rules with regard to how big a restaurant can be. There is no prohibition. Number two, to increase or expand in the dining area of a restaurant, there is no approval needed without a department of health. Okay? Uh, of course, the the same rules apply with regard to how you prepare your food and the temperature that is served, et cetera. Those things still apply, but the size of dining area, uh, does not require approval. Um, Mr. Vasco can talk about that the store is planned to put in an additional kitchen and like a service area.
Correct.
On the first floor of of the store. We've got three floors, and forty carriages on the third floor, and it's approximately fifty thousand square feet on each floor. So the plan is to put in an additional, uh, kitchen and service area on the first floor, and that kitchen would be approximately three to four thousand square feet, which is almost double the the kitchen of the one that we have now. So, uh, we've been permitted to operate a food establishment, food establishment for some time. We are, uh, will have all of our sales associates trained and, if Scott can talk about the mechanics of how a liquor order is placed and how it's filled. And I'm sorry, Scott just flew in from New York, so he's a little bit groggy, but he, uh, Bloomingdale's does this in New York, California, and Florida.
Specifically, so in California, we were just, I met with the, uh, director of the licensing board in California, and this is a new concept for them as well, but within ten minutes, you know, certainly with the understanding of what's occurring in the retail space, uh, the director was extremely supportive. Uh, we have one at our flagship on Fifty-Nine Street in New York, which is nine floors, roughly a million square feet. Uh, we've been operating that for about six months now without any incident whatsoever. Uh, we've also been granted full license, uh, full premise licenses, extension of our current licenses, and two of our stores in Florida, the other two applications are pending. Uh, we've done the same in New York. We've applied for extension, extension, uh, of those licenses for full premise licenses in our other four stores in New York State and anticipate receiving those as well. We have a pending application for the same in the state of Illinois for our flagship, uh, in Chicago. What we're looking for is, as, um, counsel has has discussed, is that we're trying to really enhance the experience of our customers coming into the building. Our target demographic is female, roughly, roughly a baby boomer. And so what we're looking for is that someone can come in and have an experience when they're when they're shopping for shoes or they're shopping for jewelry or they're they're having a spa service, that they're simply able to get, uh, a craft cocktail or a glass of champagne and something to eat with that because typically those experiences last last a few hours. Um, and then as far as the mechanics, what we've done is we're able to tap into our POS system, um, and, uh, once a an individual's been, uh, carted, uh, if so applicable, that we can place the order, goes up to the current bar, uh, will identify the location of where that needs to be delivered to, and then one of our staff members from the current operation will deliver it to that locale. We, uh, do plan on having specialized glassware, uh, so that all of our store associates and our asset protection, um, can identify who actually is carrying a beverage within that. We're asking for pre-flow. Do I anticipate that that's gonna be the case where someone's gonna be walking around? In some cases, yes, but I think in in most circumstances, one of our metrics is dwell time, and typically our shoppers dwell in one particular area. They're coming in for a purpose. Um, and in addition to that, we do have asset, uh, protection, both undercover and monitors, so we are constantly monitoring activity all throughout the store. Our associates are very well-versed as well as asset protection in making sure things that shouldn't go out the building don't go out the building.
Questions, Commissioners?
I have a lot of questions.
Yes, I knew you would.
As you know, this is very out of the ordinary for us. Um, new concept for Honolulu.
Sure.
Um, so, um, first, um, I I know that you, I, you stated who your target demographic is, but that doesn't mean that that's the only people that are gonna be in the store. Um, so, you know, and I I go to Alamoan a lot, and there's always women with children. So, um, my first question is how you're gonna prevent, um, service or consumption to minors and also along those same lines, um, controlling the bussing of glasses and beverage containers. You know, if somebody is shopping and they have half a glass of wine and then leave it someplace, this is a big area we're talking about and was to prevent a minor from coming by, grabbing it and drinking it.
Sure. And in addition to our regular sales associates and our asset protection, we also have housekeeping staff. We're luxury retailers, so it's very, very important how we display our merchandise and certainly the condition of the store itself. If you were to walk into our store today, you would find it, and I did a store tour today. It's immaculate. Everything's in place. If there's ever anything out of place, our associates are trained to fix that problem as well as the, we have restrooms on all of the floors, so we have the housekeeping that is constantly patrolling the floors, making sure everything's in place and it's clean and presentable for our customers.
Okay. Um, also, are you gonna be allowing alcoholic beverages to go inside of private areas like bathrooms and fitting rooms?
Um, within fitting rooms, no. Within bathrooms, no.
Okay, so how are you gonna control that?
Again, we have associates that patrol the stores. We have asset protection that are monitoring. We'll also use signage to denote that as well. Um, as far as our fitting rooms, we control those with store associates.
Okay. Um, and are, so are your, are your retail associates going to be taking orders, alcoholic beverage orders?
That's the intent, that they will have the capability of doing that. So, we have very robust digital ed- education systems which are actually administered by our asset protection group. Um, so there will be extensive training. Again, we're luxury retailers, so we have, we expect them to have extensive knowledge on their product. This is just an additional line that we will be adding, and the expectation is, is that anything that they're really touching, they have a firm and grasp understanding of of what it is and what they're doing.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Who, if we are to approve this license, I'm sure that you will be, um, advising your client as to their responsibilities when it comes to employees, when it comes to the training and certification of the employees that are gonna be serving alcohol?
Yes.
And last question for me. Um, are you folks gonna be serving it in glasses and bottle, like, in bottles or like glassware or is it gonna be?
We have actually, we've looked at a couple of different, um, solutions. One is a, um, and again, being a luxury retailer, I wanna be sensitive to what we're putting, the vessel that we're using. Um, we found a lucite glass, glassware line, so to speak, that we would logo, so it'd be very distinctive, so that any store associate, asset protection would be a, be able to identify that as someone carrying an alcoholic beverage through the building.
Is it able to break those?
No, not the, and that's one of the reasons why I like those. It's...
Because that can become a safety issue?
Yes, agreed.
That's all for me.
When was the license first approved by this commission, Mr. Who?
A couple of years ago.
Almost four years ago.
And I'll shrug with you, my concern, and I I heard you saying that there's nothing that prevents the licensee from expanding its license premises, but if you come in...
The restaurant premises.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Um, you come in for a license application two years ago. You're representing to the public, and with public notice that you are gonna use seventeen hundred square feet, and now you're asking for a hundred fifty thousand. My concern is maybe two years ago, there would have been more people in a public process that would want to at least engage the process so they can say their for or against, or at least raise concerns. So that, and I shared with Chair Min's, um, comments, this is different and new for us. We're all for innovation, creativity, and we applaud the innovation, but it doesn't, it just doesn't seem right to me that this process here can circumvent the public process.
Well, first of all, the, uh, the rules only require notification to the labor report, to which we have given, because it is obviously a big, a big increase, and they've not said anything. If you look at the map of where these premises are located, uh, if you go five hundred feet out, you're gonna, you you hit Alamoan Beach, all right? So that side is nothing. Going to Maoka, you may hit, if it were a larger area, you may hit some additional, um, residences, but not many.
So the condominiums.
That's, that that is true, but five hundred feet is not that, right? A lot of it is the shopping center itself.
I have an additional question. Are you folks going to be, uh, is there any way to monitor the consumption? You know, like, we've stated a couple times, this is a big area.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, and is there any way to monitor how many beverages someone has had? If they're going to a different associate every time for a drink, you know, and staying in the store for quite some time, um, do you folks have any way to monitor over service?
Yes, through the point-of-sale system. And and let me, let me speak, um, to the economics of, um, restaurants and retail versus normal restaurants. Prior to coming on board with, um, Bloomingdale's, I I spent my whole career on the hotel and restaurant side. Typically, you know, the beverage mix, the alcohol... Typically, you know, the beverage mix, the alcoholic beverage mix for casual dining, polished casuals, 30%, 30%. Right now, ours isn't even 5%. So, you know, our patrons that do come in, even to our restaurants, are typically only enjoying one glass of wine, one beer. Also, the pricing structure is much different from what you might find in a typical restaurant. We're not looking to discount liquor. I'm looking to serve strictly high-end brands where we'll get $16 to $20 per cocktail, so it really doesn't lend to anyone coming in and having, you know, multiple, they're not, they're not going to come to our place to drink, they're coming in for a shopping experience. And that's all we're looking to do, is to enhance that experience.
I like that you brought up that you have a hotel industry background, because this is, to me, more analogous to a resort license, where there's consumption allowed of the entire property, which is a large resort property. So I would hope you would lend that experience in controlling the sale and service of alcohol to, if we decide to...
And absolutely, and very similar to a hotel experience, where you do have staff members that aren't directly related to the food and beverage experience, your housekeeping personnel, your engineers, everyone is really in tune to calling things that don't look right or are out of place and responding and reacting to them.
Thank you.
What's the timing, in your perfect world of implementing this, if we're to approve the application?
Also, understanding that this is a relatively new concept, there's no rush. We want to be very systematic about the approach, which I know would entail training, logistics. Ideally, I'd like to have this in place for our Christmas season, and again, we would start very slowly, so I wouldn't open it up, I might start with just a few particular areas where we would bait it, where you could, we could test it first, iron out bugs, and then when we feel comfortable, expand.
Okay. For your other locations, and let's say, New York, for example, I think I heard you say, this has been done for about six months. Do you keep track of percentage sales increase of alcohol based on the expansion to the entire premises?
We do, and we just started separating it out from an accounting standpoint to kind of underline the significance or lack of, of sales within our systems. And we've been in the food and beverage business at Bloomingdale's for over 60 years. So the ratio was so insignificant, where most restaurant groups and hospitality groups will segment out on their statements, you know, this much food, this much, we haven't even done so. We've just started doing it, and it's still below 10%.
Okay.
And that, the flagship in particular is nine floors, covers a million square feet, and we haven't had a single incident in that time period.
And I was going to ask that, so if there were incidents, you would keep track of them at all different stores?
Oh, absolutely. We have a very robust asset protection group in that building.
And going to, I'm glad you gave us that price point, $16 to $20 for the drinks, is that the current price point at the 40-carat restaurant?
We're a little bit less there, and again, our sales are so, liquor sales have been so insignificant. Again, it's just someone coming in to have a salad and a glass of wine, or a beer with a sandwich.
One last question, I believe, on, again, on the lines of implementation. What's the approximate timeframe? You mentioned you're looking at a larger kitchen, to the 3,000 square foot. Is that going to be determined on how, like a trial period works, on if you implement that, or is that in the, in the works currently?
Well, somewhat confidentially, but I'm here, also, we've been, if you're familiar with Sheldon Simeon of Lineage on Maui, we've been in serious talks with Sheldon, he would like to partner with us, not only here in Hawaii, but in California, and if we do this, it would be with him, and it would be a very high-end restaurant.
Okay.
Please don't let my secret out.
Public area.
I'm from Maui, so I'm sorry.
Could you just clarify for me, sir, one response here? Is there any way that you can track how many drinks a customer has purchased in the licensed area?
Yes, via the POS system, correct.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions or type of action?
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. We are now in executive session. We are now back on record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve request number 1-9-16989 with the following conditions: licensee will provide a general report of operations. They will be under a one-year probationary period, a six-month review, where they will appear to provide us with the general report.
So in six months, we will appear?
Yes.
And will there be any specific information that the general report is to contain?
Just basically on the operations, any incidents, and commissioners will ask any questions if they deem appropriate at that time.
Fine. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 14, request number 1-9-16989 is approved with the conditions stated in Vice Chairman's motion.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number 15, request number 20-20153 from Ali Saki LLC, or is that Saki?
Steak. Steak. Timothy Golden Partner, G-O-L-D-E-N.
Thank you. Commissioner?
This is for Oktoberfest, correct?
Why is it in September?
It actually starts on September, we follow the traditional, Oktoberfest normally doesn't run until October very far, so this year it starts on September 20th and ends on October 4th. So we just, the first weekend.
Most of the area that you try to extend is that barn area?
That is the barn, correct.
That's pretty secured on both sides, your chain link fences and so forth, right?
Correct. There's roughly 10 to 14-foot entrance, but it's on a roller gate, so we can expand and track that entrance as we like.
Okay.
And Village Bottle Shop, you folks, how do you intend to serve the alcohol in that space?
We do jockey boxes, so that the coolers with the kegs underneath, so we have like a mobile station out there.
Okay, because you folks don't normally do bottles and stuff, except for in your retail places.
Correct, yes, the outside is strictly through the jockey boxes.
Okay.
Motion to approve request number 20-20153.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 15, request number 20-20153 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 16, request number 20-20197 from IQ Factory LLC.
Hi, my name is Don Trong. I'm with La Cucina.
Thank you. Commissioners?
This is a request to...
For extensions?
For extension.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is like the third time my accountant, he has ammonia, so, because he was hospitalized for a few months, so it, the ammonia. Yeah, he was in the hospital for a few months, so he kind of, he's got back to work and he's back on his, delaying our tax, getting our tax clearance.
How long do you need?
He's expecting end of this month, but I would like to, you know, give him, just in case, I don't want to have to ask you for a second, so I'd say just to be on the safe side, say October, just to be...
60 days?
Yeah, 60 days, just in case I don't want to have to come here and give you another excuse.
How long have you had your accountant?
I have him since I opened the restaurant since 2012.
Because you were here last year for several...
Yeah, so this is like his third time. He's a single operational, single person, so I've been open since 2012, and I had him ever since then. He's basically a one-man operation.
Motion to approve request number 20-20197 for an additional 60 days.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 16, request number 20-20197 is approved for an additional 60 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number 17. Request number 20-20207 from Honolulu Academy of Arts.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, I'm Allison Wong, A-L-L-I-S-O-N-W-O-N-G. I'm the Deputy Director of the Honolulu Museum of Arts.
Thank you. Commissioner?
This is a request for a waiver for personal history and affidavit, criminal history record, parents, and fingerprints, correct?
Correct. For a body of trustees.
Who exactly are you asking a waiver for?
We're asking for a request to extend for moving forward for any additional trustees that we bring onto the museum. It's, you know, we have trustees that come on throughout the year, not just during the annual meeting time, so once a year, so we're asking for a waiver for them, any continuing board of trustees, board of trustees that we add on in the future would not, would be able to be waived of this.
How many trustees do you have?
We have currently 28 right now.
And the request is in perpetuity?
Yes. We did one back in 2011, we requested it when we merged from the Contemporary Museum to the Academy of Arts, and it was waived at that time, so we are just continuing to ask for this.
Do you have an internal vetting process? I'm sure your trustees are outstanding members of the community, and the DRC's, I don't know any of them, but do you have an internal vetting system to make sure that there is no criminal histories, convictions, et cetera?
We will have them, so we will have them fill out a form that says they are not convicted of any felonies, and we'll have them sign them annually, and we'll have those on the table.
And you will also state for the record that they will have nothing to do with the service of alcohol?
Correct.
Correct, right?
Okay, yes.
My motion is to approve request number 20-20207 for three years.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 17, request number 20-20207 is approved for three additional years.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number 18, request number 20-20233 from the Woon's, excuse me, LLC. The Woon's LLC. Okay, we'll move this to the end of the agenda. Calling agenda item number 20, request number 20-20030 from James Lee Esquire on behalf of Creve LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Commissioner.
Can your client come with you?
I, yes, I would like to have, yes.
Please introduce your client.
Yes, I, James Lee, representing SLK Inc., represented by Mrs. Kim, who's the shareholder and also the manager, and also the Creve LLC, Mr. Park.
Could you state their first names, please?
My name is Lisa Kim, L-I-S-A-K-E-M.
Chang Hyeong Bo, C-H-A-N-G-H-Y-U-N, K-Y-A-K.
Perhaps you could write it down for the hearings reporter, please?
I will, yes, okay.
If I may, I'd like to share some information that I gathered since the last hearing. Last time we were here, Commissioner Min specifically asked for some sort of eviction proceeding or something to that effect. I contacted the property management who managed the property, the previous landlord, and on the dated, on this letter dated March 1st, they, apparently they sent out a five-day notice to pay or quit, and it was certified.
I see that here.
And following that, on this Exhibit B, the security deposit statement clearly spells out that he had been in default, and of the security deposit he had with the landlord, $48,000, had been depleted, and in fact, he's owe, he owes $42.51 by the time that this had been sent out on April 4th, okay? So as such, clearly, he had been evicted, and he actually, from my understanding, he voluntarily removed himself from the premises. And according to this Exhibit C, the current landlord, Mr. and Mrs. Kim, purchased the property on, the date of recording is March 27, 2019. So what we are asking is that the previous licensee's license be terminated, and they be given a waiver to apply for transfer of the license.
So Mr. and Mrs. Kim are the new landlords?
Yes.
Okay, and...
And he's the new tenant, Mr. Park is the new tenant, Creve LLC.
Okay, so you represent the landlord and you represent the new proposed tenant?
Correct. To be called Billyan Porchak.
You don't have a writ of possession, do you?
Excuse me?
You do not have a writ of possession to show us?
It wasn't necessary, he removed himself voluntarily.
You said that there was an eviction, eviction requires a...
Well, I, that was a, you said wrong, but he removed himself voluntarily, so...
So you say the eviction was not even required? So you say he abandoned the premises?
Correct.
Was any equipment or inventory left in the premises?
I don't think so, because they had to go in and clean up everything, and they're just basically renovating the whole premises.
Could you speak to that, Mr. Chang?
Just the trash.
Furniture, fixtures, equipment, inventory was all taken on?
Inventory, no, nothing.
Have you had any conversations with Mr. Christopher Tai in the last month?
In fact, I spoke to him before I came here, about two hours ago, before the meeting started, the commission hearing started, and he said something to the effect that, well, I'm ticked off because the new landlord, he wouldn't give his buyer, I mean, he wanted to sell his business, apparently, but then the new landlord threw a monkey wrench into the whole thing, and they tell me that somebody alleging to be the buyer came by and they were not happy with the terms and conditions. So there was no buyer, there was no, and in fact, according to Mr. Tai's letter, which he submitted last time on July 31st, you know, he said he was trying to get, he's still trying to get tax clearance, and there's something to the effect of ongoing lawsuit. Well, I did some checking, the only lawsuit that I could find was at the...
He owes him some money, right?
Yeah, to the Federal Credit Union, basically, and that's the only lawsuit I could find. So there is no ongoing lawsuit against the previous landlord, nor the current landlord.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. We are now in executive session. Okay, thank you very much. We're now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any, um, questions for the applicant or a type of action?
Yes, Chair. Well, in regards to request number two zero dash two zero zero three zero, uh, we'll be taking no action on, uh, request number one, first part of the request. And in regards to the second part, waiver of Rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-two point one subsection A, we'll approve that request.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Uh, agenda item number twenty, request number two zero dash two zero zero three zero, uh, there's no action taking on the first part of the request, the termination of dispenser general license, number E one four nine four. And the second, uh, waiver of Rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-two point one, one A is approved.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Let's move on to, uh, request number twenty-one's. Request number two zero dash two zero two two six from Jungsuki Iron Otsuk. How'd I do? Pretty good?
You did pretty good.
Very much.
Not bad.
Not, not bad. Okay, thank you, Mr. R.
Good afternoon, Chairman and, uh, Commissioners. Uh, this is, uh, Jungsuke Iron Otsuka. Uh, on behalf of Oishi Inc., we have the manager here, Mr. Katsuyoshi Kajima. Do we need to start now?
K-A-T-S-U-Y-O-S-H-I, the first name, Katsuyoshi. Last name is Kajima, K-A-J-I-M-A.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. You have that? Very good. Okay.
Yes, currently the situation is that the, uh, Sakura Terrace is, uh, closed right now for renovation, and it's gonna take time because, uh, the building permit is not even in yet. So it's expected that the building permit will be submitted, uh, um, maybe within this month, hopefully. And then we're talking about maybe two months down the line where we, where we could even get the new plans. So, so we are trying to transfer it, but, uh, well, you know, we need, we, we need additional time. And the license itself is in the, uh, it's because the, it's closed, licenses itself isn't in the liquor commission, so...
It's in safekeeping.
Yep, there should be no problem.
Thank you.
How much time do you need?
Uh, maybe September, I guess, so.
I don't think we need enough time for it. We just need a waiver.
Yeah, okay, just, okay, fine. Thank you.
All right, motion to approve request number two zero dash two zero two two six.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-one, request number two zero dash two zero two two six is approved.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-two, request number two, two zero dash two zero two three four from Wayne Luke Esquire. On behalf of Agu Eisenberg.
Wayne Luke, on behalf of Agu Eisenberg, uh, my letter is self-explanatory. The license just was not renewed, renewed this July.
So the waiver is...
So I'm gonna file for a temporary license.
Okay, but weren't they the existing licensee there? No?
Yes.
They were?
The license was, was not renewed.
So that was not renewed?
Yeah.
And you're asking for a waiver so that they can file an application for a temporary license?
Yes, the five days, the five days to file a temporary license has passed.
Is this a new entity?
Yeah, we, right now it's a new entity applied.
But same restaurant?
No, it's a different entity for the same restaurant.
Okay, so this is Agu Ramen Restaurant on Eisenberg Street, correct?
Correct.
They did not renew their license?
Right.
And now they are asking for...
A new entity.
A new licensee is coming in.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Commissioners, three questions. All right. Motion to approve request number two zero dash two zero two three four.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-two, request number two zero dash two zero two three four is approved.
Thank you.
Then we, um, can I go back and, uh, do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to call, calling agenda item number eighteen, uh, request number two zero dash two zero two three three from the Wong's LLC, Mr. Sato. And what was the other one?
That's the only one.
That's the only one.
That was...
Uh, if there's no appearance, I would suggest that this matter just be continued to the next available date. We will contact the licensee for, um, a good date for him this year.
Okay. There wasn't one in the beginning?
No, we, they appeared.
They appeared. Oh, Mr. Nishiyoka. Okay, so let's go into adjudication.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll continue.
Yeah, for eighteen, yeah.
Uh, motion to continue, request number two zero dash two zero two three three to the next available date.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that was agenda item number...
Eighteen?
Eighteen. Agenda item, I vote aye. Agenda item number eighteen, request number two zero dash two zero two three three is, can you continue to the next available date?
Okay, um, and Chair?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Motion for the adoption of decision and order for agenda items twenty-three and thirty-four inclusive.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The adoption of decision and order, agenda items number twenty-three through thirty-four inclusive are approved. Moving into adjudication.
Uh, good afternoon. Joy Neely, Deputy Corporation, Corporation Counsel on the record as prosecutor for today's adjudication items.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number thirty-five.
Uh, licensee has, uh, signed a written stipulation and waiver of appearance. No, okay, sorry, to plead, uh, so a stipulation to plead no contest and waiver of appearance.
Uh, motion to accept the no contest plea in written form and waive the appearance.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-five, the no contest is approved via the written request.
Uh, this was the first violation and the fine, recommended fine was five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-five, recommended fine of, uh, excuse me, fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty-six, Y Sports Bar and Grill.
Did the record reflect, uh, to my right is Kong Tu, K-O-N-G, space, T-U. She is president with counsel, Wayne Luke. We waive reading of the charges, uh, enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-six, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? Uh, this is a second violation of, um, tying Neely's submission of the annual employee list. Uh, previous, uh, incident violation occurred in two thousand and sixteen. I recommend a fine of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Luke?
Yeah, um, she just took over last year. The other one was done by the prior owners. The prior owner did not inform our, that this report was not filed, so, but it's her responsibility, so we're, uh, so that's why we're pleading no contest.
And when did you take over the...
August, uh, August of two thousand and eighteen.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-six, the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agi, agenda item number thirty-seven, Club Waterfall.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is William Chong, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-C-H-O-N-G, and I'm the president for Club Waterfall.
Thank you.
Uh, the charge is, honor about August fifteenth, twenty eighteen, and/or during the period from August fifteenth, twenty eighteen to August thirty-one, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to submit the name of every person then employed on the licensed premises, premise, who is registered, registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of Rule three eighty-two thirty-eight point eight of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Sure, how would you like to plead?
Um, I'll plead no contest with, uh, with a reason, though.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-seven, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? Uh, this is the first violation. I recommend a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Chong, go ahead, sir.
Okay, what happened? This is right between the end, my, mine was due August fifteenth, and the next month is September. So I had two ladies that, because the kids start school in September, they wasn't sure whether they were gonna leave me, uh, in January, I mean, in September, to go back and take care of their kids, or whether they were gonna stay. So because of that deadline of August thirty-first, um, July first, second was Saturday, Sunday, the third was, um, Labor Day. So when they actually decided over that weekend, then I tr, I did a transmittal log to the liquor commission on, uh, September fourth. And a week later, the inspector came by and asked me that I, I submitted it, and I said, "Yeah," I told him what day I submitted it, and nothing came of it until I, I got the notice to, to come here.
So there's no, but, there's no penalty if you register employees that then later are not employed by you?
No, see, the thing is, I draw the line through, and then you guys take them off, and they decide to stay, then I gotta send them back down to re...
Well, what I'm saying is, just if they're, if you think they might stay...
Right.
To just leave them on the list.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for next time, okay?
Okay.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-seven, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-eight, Double Tree Alana Waikiki.
Uh, this licensee has also signed a written stipulation to plead no contest and waiver of appearance.
Thank you.
Motion to, uh, accept the no contest plea in written form and waiver of appearance.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-eight, the, um, no contest plea is accepted via, uh, written request.
Uh, this is the first violation of, um, submission of the annual employee list. I recommend a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-eight, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty-nine, Eight Five Zero, Leewood Hall.
Uh, this licensee has also signed a written stipulation to plead no contest and waiver of appearance.
Motion to accept the no contest plea in written form and waiver of appearance.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-nine, the no contest plea is accepted via, uh, written notice.
Uh, this was a first violation, I, uh, for, again, for, uh, annual employee list. I recommend a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Uh, agenda item number thirty-nine, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number forty, Club La Vine in Woods.
Uh, this licensee also signed a written, uh, stipulation to plead no contest and waiver of appearance.
Motion to accept the no contest plea in written form and waiver of appearance.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Uh, agenda item number forty, the no contest plea is accepted via written, uh, request.
Uh, this was the first violation of submission of the employee list. I recommend a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number forty-one, Pearl Harbor, Honolulu Branch, Forty-Six, Fleet Reserve Association.
Liquor Commissioner, my name is Thomas Berger, T-H-A-M-A-S-B-E-R-G-E-R, uh, president of the association.
Uh, the charges honor about September fourteen, twenty eighteen, and/or during the period from September fourteen, twenty eighteen to September twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to submit the name of every person then employed on the licensed premise, who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission, in violation of Rule three eighty-two thirty-eight point eight of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? This is the first violation. I recommend a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Berger, any comment?
Um, there's a rotating, with our board of directors being a nonprofit, there's a rotating presidency and, you know, board of directors to go through. This is my second term, and the previous president didn't, um, he didn't inform us of some of the things that we need to do. Don't wanna get too much into that, but, so this is, then with this coming up, I know that we have another one coming in September. Um, are we mailed the forms? Do we have to pick up the forms to do this?
Any questions that you have, our staff is available to you folks during regular business hours. You can call, you can email, you can come down to the counter, and they can assist you with any questions that you have.
Okay, that, that was our main question, because we just don't wanna be here next year, you know, fighting with these ladies.
There's also a lot of information online, Mr. Berger, so you may wanna take...
We're gonna take a look.
Yeah, we are moving over to having you be able to do almost everything online, so the information should all be there and readily available. But if you do have questions or you're having issues, we're always available to you here during regular business hours.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-one, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Calling agenda item number forty-two, Jap Kai Chi Restaurant, Mr. Luke.
Did the record reflect Wayne Luke's counsel? We waive reading of the charges, enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-two, the recommended fine, uh, recommend, excuse me, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? Uh, this was the first violation of unauthorized transferred business. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Luke?
There's no explanation for it. It's, a lot of the cases that we have, that they, they do the transfer or the sale, you know, without coming to the commission.
Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-two, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is, um, approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number, uh, forty-three, He Ipaka LLC.
Uh, this licensee has requested a continuance to September fifth, twenty nineteen, because, uh, the attorney on the case left the firm. Um, I have no objection to the continuance.
And you said September fifth?
September fifth.
Okay. Motion to continue, agenda item forty-three, He Ipaka LLC, to September fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number forty-three, continue to September fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Calling agenda item number forty-four, Lucky Belly.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, I, Oksiana, on behalf of the licensee, seated to my right is Jesus Cruz, C-R-U-Z, he is the member of the, uh, licensee. We will be, uh, entering a plea of, uh, no contest as to count one and two. Um, we've reading of the charges, uh, we're entering a denial for count three.
And Ms. Oksiana, are you going to, um, contest a hearing today? Would you like a contested hearing today?
Yes.
Okay.
I would request a continuance on the contested hearing in order to subpoena it.
Okay, so let's...
See, I don't believe any witnesses are necessary, because this matter has already been, um, it's mostly a paperwork issue, and it's been written up in a couple of investigative reports already, because this is, um, a factual basis that we've been here before. Mr. Cruz ha, as you know, has two licenses.
Before you get too far into it, um, I think that, uh, we... Before you get too far into it, um, well, um, I think that, uh, we need to give our prosecutor some time to prepare for this contested case. Do you need some time?
Yeah, I was just in the fight.
Okay, um, we'll, we'll take, we'll, we'll take action on the, um, first two charges right now. A motion to accept the no contest pleas for charges one and two.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-four, no contest plea is accepted for charge number one.
Uh, this was a first violation of failure to notify the commission of the change of members within thirty days, uh, you're going to find a five hundred dollars.
As to charge one, Ms. Oxyana?
Um, yes, so, um, as the commission is aware, my client has, uh, two licenses. Uh, one for, um, a restaurant called Livestock Tavern, and one for a restaurant called Lucky Deli, and they are across split tall street from each other. Um, and in September of two thousand seventeen, my client notified, uh, the commission of the change deleting Dustin Grable. Uh, it was dated June eighth, two thousand eighteen. On Sep- on July twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, the change was approved by the commission. Um, Mr. Cruz did appear before you, I believe it was in two, either two thousand eighteen or earlier this year, um, on the violation that was issued to livestock, because they had basically the same issues. Um, I don't know if you recall, when we were here before, we explained to the commission that there were three individuals who, um, were members of both entities for both restaurants. And there was some confusion between the members about who would be, uh, get an ownership interest and when. There was an issue with one of the members where she, um, had promised a certain amount of money to invest in the entities. That money never materialized, so her ownership interest wasn't given to her until the money was received. Um, and then there was some negotiation between the members about how much the percentage would be, and when people would be added and deleted. Um, and they did all of this on their own, without the benefit of, you know, having consulted with an attorney. Once they were able to sort of figure out who would own what and when, uh, they did try to notify the commission of those changes. Unfortunately, it was much more than thirty days after the fact, and, um, Mr. Cruz does not deny that he waited too long to notify the commission. But it was due to them trying to figure this out on their own. Um, he did also, uh, when he was reporting the members on his renewal forms, was under the assumption that he would only put himself, because he is the only one responsible for the operation of his licenses. Um, he did not add in the other member, because she's only an investor and is not responsible for any of the day-to-day. So, he was under the mistaken impression that he could just put himself down as a member of the entity when he renewed both licenses. Uh, when we were here earlier on the Livestock Tavern violations for this exact same paperwork issue, he pled no contest, and he was fined and did pay seven hundred and fifty dollars for those fines. Um, seeing as, you know, this violation is really, it's actually two years old, um, he was under the impression that he had taken care of it when we were here before. He's paid, um, you know, a seven hundred fifty dollar fine, which is larger than what is being asked for today. We would just ask, um, some consideration from the commission in terms of either lowering the fine or considering giving Mr. Cruz a letter of reprimand. Um, he does now understand his responsibility to report these things in a timely fashion. He does now understand what the renewal paperwork means, um, and he has been since consulting me for any changes so that we can make sure everything is done properly going forward.
You can see you're now, but, in capable counsel. Uh, motion to let, issue a letter of reprimand for charge one.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item forty-four, uh, charge number one, a letter of reprimand will be issued.
Ms. Neely, what is your recommendation for charge two?
Uh, five hundred dollars.
Ms. Oxyana?
Um, and, count two arises from the exact same confusion and issues that Mr. Cruz was having previously that led to, um, count one. I believe this particular count, um, was because the deletion of Dustin Grable wasn't submitted to the commission until July, I'm sorry, September of two thousand eighteen, when the change occurred in two thousand and seventeen.
Was it either present, or I don't recall...
I'm sorry.
When the issue, the similar issue arose, uh, livestock, um, was there a similar fine?
Yes, there was.
Do you recall what that fine was?
Um, I believe it was also a five hundred dollar fine, and I know that Mr. Cruz has since paid any outstanding fines that he owes to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing as this has occurred, this is now two charges for the same place, for the same, um, license. Uh, my motion is to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge two.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-four, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
And as to charge three, Ms. Neely, um, do you have a date certain for when you're pre-prepared for, uh, the contested hearing?
Can we continue till August twenty-second? I understand that date is available for...
Ms. Oxyana, you have any objections to August twenty-second?
Uh, if I could just have one more?
Yes, of course.
Yes, that date works.
Okay. Uh, so a motion to continue, agenda item forty-four, charge three, to August twenty-second, for penalty, uh, contested hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-four, charge number three is continued, uh, until August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Calling agenda item number forty-five, The Crawfish and Crab Shack, Mr. Luke.
The owner, Edward Sabala, is President and Counsel Wayne Luke.
And, um, I will be moving to dismiss this charge, it's a charge for consumption on a connected premises, but, um, there is no actual consumption observed.
Motion to dismiss, uh, charges on, for agenda item forty-five, The Crawfish and Crab Shack.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in fa- favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-five is dismissed. Calling agenda item number forty-six, The Crawfish and Crab Shack.
Calling item forty-six, Edward Sabala, the owner is President and Counsel Wayne Luke, we waive reading of the charges, enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-six, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
Uh, this was a first violation of sale of liquor to minor, I recommend a fine of five, one thousand dollars.
Mr. Luke, sale to minor.
Could we take forty-seven, it was on the same date, do we have the same expiration?
Um, no, as agendas.
Oh, okay, well, it's the same expiration.
So address number forty-six, please.
Go ahead, whatever.
Okay, we had a special event, and all night guys been trying to sneak in liquor, and the Liquor Commission guys was there and catching them too, trying to communicate, sneaking in liquor, so, we just had a big problem that we, gonna be impossible for stop, so what we did is, all special events, we ain't doing them no more. We just go run as a restaurant, and that's it. We change our hours, we close at, kitchen closes at nine, they get to eleven for eat, and we close now, so, we ain't gonna do any more special events, 'cause it's gonna be impossible for stop, guys from trying to sneak in alcohol and underage drinking and things like that.
So, got a little bit out of hand.
Yeah, that was our first event this while. And I guess the guys that did the promotion, they get a bad reputation sometime, I heard, so, you did it...
If you remember, that was our concern.
Yeah, see.
Uh, you having the ability to control the extended license.
Yeah.
So it's my understanding there was some, uh, altercations, Honolulu police were present?
Yes.
Things like that, so...
So we just canceled everybody's booking that want to make events over there, and we ain't gonna do that no more, 'cause it's gonna be impossible for stop all these guys from sneaking in alcohol and things like that.
So let me ask you one question, on that event, weren't you required to furnish this commission with a written post-event?
Yes.
Did you do that?
I believe my partner, he's outside, he came over here and they told him that something like no need or something.
Well, you appeared before us the last time, and I believe as a condition of, uh, your special license, we instructed you to give us a post-event report.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure he did that.
Okay.
Yeah.
In any event, I think they would have had to have this adjudication before you could do anything, and, you know, yeah, just petty.
He actually came here...
Yeah, that's right.
And talked to a lady in front of him.
So this is, this was definitely during a special event, a special license, not during your normal course of...
No.
Restaurant operation.
No.
This would have been included after.
Yeah.
Uh, motion to...
If it hasn't been done, we'll do it.
Okay, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-six, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Moving on to agenda item number forty-seven.
Edward Sabala is President and Counsel Wayne Luke.
If I may, Mr. Luke, I'm a little bit slow, 'cause it's been a long day. The Crawfish and Crack Crab Shack.
The owner, Edward Sabala, is President and Counsel Wayne Luke, we waive reading of the charges, enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-seven, the recommended fine, I mean, uh, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? Uh, this is the first violation of sale of liquor to minor, I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Luke again, please.
It's the same, we incorporate the explanation in, item forty, forty-six.
So your representation was that this was during a special event?
This was during it.
And that no special events are going to be occurring at this license premises anymore?
If we do them, we ain't gonna be able to stop them from sneaking in alcohol and all that nonsense that we don't need.
Okay.
Very good, thank you, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number forty-seven, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Aye, thank you.
Calling agenda item number forty-six, do we have any administrative matter?
Not yet.